On behalf of the UN family based in Ethiopia, we wish you, Mr. Secretary-General, a warm welcome to the UN Conference Center in Addis Ababa. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you despite your busy schedule. I also want to warmly welcome our principals that are present in the room and also two colleagues that are in the room. May I say again, good morning. Without further ado, I would like to invite the President of the Staff Union to deliver his address.
Thank you, M.C. Mr. Secretary-General, Madame the ECA Executive Secretary, Madame the Special Representative of the Secretary-General to AUC, Mr. the Resident Coordinator, dear heads of agencies, dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the UN family in Ethiopia, I am very pleased to extend a warm welcome to the Secretary-General and all staff members present in this town hall today. At the onset, allow me to wish you Happy New Year once again, even if we are in February and even if I have had the opportunity to tell it recently in the UN Town Hall on 17th of January. Mr. Secretary-General, I would also like to take this opportunity to express the appreciation of the United Nations Staff Union and Associations here in Ethiopia for your initiative once again to have a meeting with all staff in Ethiopia despite a very tight schedule. This is a self-explanatory proof of how much you value the main pillar of the UN, more precisely the staff, Mr. Secretary-General, as you said it yourself several times, an affirmation of the high priority you attach to them. In the same line, you are going to give personally the recognition certificates to our elders, the new retirees. I wish to congratulate them on behalf of the UN family here in Ethiopia who benefited from their collaboration during their career. They have dedicated their working life to the UN and we wish them first good health and then good luck as they start a new journey of their life. Yes, they are retiring, but I know them and some of them are in front of us. We see that they are not retired. It is just a new journey which is starting. Mr. Secretary-General, the first two years of your term are completed now and we have seen numerous changes through the reform you have initiated. The SGBs, the STIs and other policy documents have been reviewed and published and the staff have been part of this process which is still going on. Today, we want to assure you that the UN family here in Ethiopia is committed to share your vision and address the challenges that the UN is facing in today's changing world. However, it should be highly appreciated if an accountability framework is instituted at all the levels of those you have delegated your authority. Mr. Secretary-General, I cannot forget to talk about the recent survey conducted across the UN by the Staff Union. It's about work conditions since it's dealing with misconduct on the workplace. It covered a broad range of prohibited conduct, including discrimination, harassment and sexual harassment as well as abuse of authority. More than 6,000 staff participated in the survey and we have received more than 10,000 personal comments on different issues. As you know well, the results are shocking and establish clear and striking patterns. They have revealed rampant harassment and abuse across the UN system and highlighted the urgent need for concrete changes in how the UN handles cases of misconduct. For instance, at the overall UN, 40% of respondents states that they have been victims of discrimination and 73% of these cases were perpetrated by supervisors and surprisingly, only 13% of victims filed a complaint. Regarding harassment, 37% have been victim, 46% of the offenders are supervisors and only 10% have been reported. Regarding abuse of authority again, 44% of the... I'm sorry. 44% of the respondents recognize that they have been victim and these abuse of authority has been committed by 87% of supervisors and only 15% filed a complaint. The reasons why these misconducts are not reported are numerous. Mainly, they are about lack of confidentiality in the system, the fear of reprisal, precarious of contract amongst others and we think that this should stop. Mr. Secretary-General, when you took office, the WIST policy was stuck and quickly, starting from the meeting, you organized the first day you took office with the Staff Union. You took commitment that you will address it and quickly it was completed and we are very thankful for this. You have taken bold positions on critical issues such as gender policy and sexual harassment and again, we appreciate all of these efforts. We are therefore looking forward to substantial actions in light of these findings of the survey which is indeed complementing the one initiated by the management. Above all, we are all saving the same people, the staff of the UN. In January 2017, on another point, Mr. Secretary-General, during your visit here in Ethiopia, you responded favorably to the request of the UN staff here to engage the leaders of this country to have an updated host-to-country agreement. We know that you did it very well and we reiterate our deep appreciation of this. However, this is two years now and we are at the deadlock. Your commitment at the highest level to have the host-to-country agreement signed this time around is highly appreciated. In Ethiopia, we are observing substantial reforms in different areas. We are confident the authorities are willing to improve the conditions of working and living of the UN workers. They have gone even far in clearing the first draft proposed on 13th of March 2017. Even the continental organization, the AUC, has an attractive agreement. From recurrent promises, we hope to enjoy tangible fact. Thanks to your efforts, Mr. Secretary-General. Lastly, since this UN family is gathered here in this UNCC, in the ECA compound, I want to convey to you a reflection of ECA staff since more than 10 years now. In fact, you know well, we just celebrate 60 anniversary of ECA and our top leader here is the ninth Executive Secretary of ECA. While we have experienced more reforms than the number of leaders we have had, some of them have not been completed fully and sometimes staff have not had the chance to see the benefits of the reforms. And you agree with me, the mandate is not changing on the same space. While the staff supportfully the ongoing reforms, we think that it's times to strengthen the institutions instead of the leaders for more effectiveness and stability. To close, Mr. Secretary-General, we thank you again for the efforts you are doing to stay close to your staff despite your extremely busy schedule. We wish you a pleasant stay here in Ethiopia, a safe trip back to New York and every success in your functions. You have understood that you have our support. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that intervention. I now have the privilege to invite the Secretary-General to also deliver his speech.
Dear colleagues, it's a great pleasure to be back in Addis and I think that this visit takes place in an extremely favorable moment. First, because Ethiopia is one of the most exciting countries in which the UN works at the present situation. What we had, the reforms that were made, the political reforms, the new foreign policy bringing peace to the Ethiopia-Eritrea conflict and influencing positively relations between Eritrea and Somalia, the situation in South Sudan, the relations between Eritrea and Djibouti, not to mention the opening of the Ethiopian society both from the political and the economic and the social point of view. All these things make particularly fascinating to be in Ethiopia for me and I believe particularly fascinating to work in Ethiopia for you. I think it's a privilege that should be recognized. But this is also a very important moment in the work of the EU and the UN because the cooperation of the EU and the UN is not only exceptional, is not only exemplary, but it's producing results. We have seen conflicts being stuck for an enormous number of years and we see now things moving and largely things moving thanks to the cooperation between the two institutions. The most remarkable example, three days ago, the agreement in Central African Republic. Nobody would believe possible that the government and 14 armed groups were able to celebrate an agreement. It took... and it was a search in the common action of the African Union leading and the UN supporting in relation to the Central African Republic that made it possible. And we have seen South Sudan, Rik Marchar and Sal Vakir signed an agreement. And we have seen the RCD elections with its ups and downs, but it went out without violence. And we did the same kind of common prevention to avoid problems in Madagascar and in Mali after the elections with success before it had happened already in Liberia and Sierra Leone. We have seen and we are seeing joint efforts in Libya and in other areas in which the EU and the UN are really not only working together but having results. And there is a wind of hope coming from Africa blowing that I hope will be extended to the rest of the world in relation to conflict resolution and conflict prevention even if many situations are still there and many problems are still there. On the other hand, our cooperation is also exemplary from the point of view of aligning the two agendas, the 2030 and the 2063 and we are working very hard and I know that the Economic Commission for Africa, I've heard the praise of several heads of state and of the African Union for the excellent work that is being done in supporting African initiatives and namely, the very important initiative related to the free trade area in the continent. So, I think that this partnership is in a very good moment so together with what's happening in Ethiopia, it makes my visit particularly pleasant at the present moment. There is a big paradox in today's world. Our challenges are more and more global: terrorism, migration, climate change. But there is less and less support to a multilateral approach to respond to those challenges. There is no way to respond to a global challenge country by country. We need multilateral global responses. But there is certain skepticism about those multilateral responses as there is a lack of trust in institutions. You see that populists are getting elections in many countries. You see referenda in other countries conducting to results that are rather disturbing to a certain extent and you see how multilateral institutions have been under attack. The Dual Trade Organization also largely cemented is of the UN. So, there is a moment of mistrust and the UN is also to a certain extent a target in this moment of mistrust. And when we are under fire, there is only one way, is to move forward. And so, my policy in this situation is to show to the world that the UN is relevant, that we are necessary and that we are doing things and that we are not paralyzed because of the dysfunctionality of the relations among the big powers or the fact that the Security Council is not able to take decisions on several key areas in relation to peace and security in the world or that there is a certain mistrust in many parts of the world, a rage multilateralism. No, we are not afraid. We believe in what we do, we believe in the values of the Charter, in the values of the UN and so we are moving forward. And we are moving forward in all fronts. We are moving forward in the front of peace and security and it's not only in relation to Africa. Yemen, we were able to start negotiations. Nobody thought it was possible. We did it. We have been pushing and we were to a certain extent in the beginning of the conversations that led to discussions about the nuclearization of North Korea. And in many other areas, we are applying our prevention agenda to avoid conflicts and to create the conditions to allow for the drama of conflict not to erupt. On the other hand, people thought that the climate change agenda was lost, that Katowice was impossible. I read the press about Katowice the weeks before. They said, "There is no way they can come to an agreement." We did it. I went there three times. No, but we did it. And there was a huge attack all over the world against the compact on migration and the contact on refugees. Well, we did it. They were approved. I mean, some did not like it, but we did it. We don't wait, we move forward. We have a new agenda for disarmament, we have a new strategy for youth and we have a new strategy in counterterrorism. So, we are not stopping anything, we are moving forward and at the same time, we launch a very important process of reform because the vision that existed throughout the UN was, and I had the opportunity to see it very clearly in the 10 years I was head of UNHCR, that the UN is a bureaucratic organization in which people talk a lot and do very little, that processes are extremely slow and decisions are very slow and we don't really deliver according to the needs. So, it was necessary to give a big push in relation to the organization and to try to really make it more nimble, decentralize it, more effective, but doing it not in the traditional way in which reforms were presented and in the past when people would present reform was to reduce staff. No. Now, we did a reform whose objective was not to reduce staff, was to increase efficiency, was to increase our delivery. And I think that this is rather new in relation to the work of the UN but it is something that we are very fond to make sure that it happens. I issued 210 letters delegating my authority in managers and I know that 577 letters have already been issued by managers to those that are below them and this cascade to decentralized decisions is extremely important to make us more nimble. It requires accountability and the accountability mechanisms are being put in place. As you know, in the reform, we were not... we did not reduce our management departments, but we have changed them and we have introduced a very new area of accountability, transparency, risk management, compliance to make sure that the rules are abided by and to make sure that the powers that are decentralized are exercised in a way that is controlled in a transparent and effective way. And of course, things will take time, but I'm sure that things will move in that direction. As we are seeing already, an enormous benefit of the changes in the Peace and Security Department with the fact that the regional Assistant Secretary-generals are now coordinating action that was done by different departments in a totally separated way and bringing things together to have a combined view of from prevention to conflict resolution and mediation to peacekeeping, peacebuilding and long-term development. And we are trying to move forward even if we didn't have what we wanted from the financial point of view but we are moving forward on the reform on the development sector and moving forward in relation to our gender agenda, diversity agenda. The organization was basically with a... wasn't, still is, with a large domination of one single geographic group, the Western European and others, at the top management level. We are changing it substantially. Of course, it takes time, but we are doing it as we are doing gender parity as a systematic policy and as we are... we will be working hard in relation to the concerns that you have expressed. But now, there is one thing that is true and all the surveys... I've been 10 years in the organization, so I mean, I know relatively well what's going around. And there are two problems in the UN, let's be frank. One problem is that there is no incentive for good performance and there are colleagues in the UN that do almost nothing and nothing happens to them. We know that. No, we know that. And on the other hand, we have situations of abuse of power and discrimination from several areas of the management of the organization. We also know that. And we need to move to eradicate those two things. We need to have responsibility and people need to be responsible for what they do and there needs to be ways to value merit and also to a certain extent, to make it impossible for those that are here doing nothing or sabotaging the efforts we make to move and to change. But at the same time, we need to have the guarantee that those that manage, manage in a way that is fair, with respect and with non-discrimination and with the capacity to create team spirit and to create an environment of civility that is sometimes lacking in the organization. I must tell you, I'm shocked. I'm shocked sometimes reading emails that colleagues send to emails that are aggressive. I mean, there's... I mean, I sometimes have... seeing that something is not well, but it is a... "You bastard..." No, I mean, you can say, "Dear colleague, I think that probably it would be better to do this..." I mean, we need to have another culture of mutual respect and of responsibility to the organization and I do everything possible to support it and I believe the new mechanisms of accountability will strongly help to do that. Unfortunately, we don't have the same freedom of movement in the secretariat that I have, for instance, in UNHCR because of the control by the General Assembly. For all these reforms, we have to have unanimity of all member states which means that in some cases, we need to make concessions. We don't get exactly what we want. But as I said, we don't stop, we don't give up. We will move on and there are things that we hope to launch this year, moving on in the complement of the things that we have done. And one thing that is clear in relation to Africa, I want country teams that are able to deliver supporting governments in the implementation of the Agenda 2030 and making sure that African countries are able to overcome the huge obstacles of development that they face. I want an Economic Commission for Africa to be recognized as a very solid support to the development process in Africa, support to African Union, support to governments, support to country teams and doing that in a non-bureaucratic, static, no, but in a very dynamic and effective area. I want our partnership with the African Union and we have now a new... it's not ambassador, it's representative that is one of the most dynamic African politicians that I've ever met to make sure that this relationship will be even more effective in the future. And we are totally committed with our headquarters areas to bring all those that are African, Africa more closely together because everything was separated. Even peacekeeping was separated sometimes of other political aspects or other peace operations and there was no link, no clear link sometimes between operations and country teams and all... I mean, we are really trying to... everything that is linked to Africa in headquarters to try to be brought more together. We have our office. I believe that the leader of the office is with us. Not Ba, she's in another meeting already, but in support to the African operations and we really count a lot on you, dear colleagues. And I have to say, I said it to the country team and I want to say it in particular also to our Ethiopian colleagues that are here. It is a fascinating moment. I lived the revolution in my country in '74, '75. We moved from a dictatorship to democracy with lots of hiccup and problems but it was a fascinating period. I think that to be Ethiopian or to work in Ethiopia at the present moment is a fantastic thing and I really wish to Ethiopia the best success in the very important transformation that Ethiopia is undergoing.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary-General, for that very informative and also inspiring speech but also much more forward-looking. We really appreciate for that. Colleagues, dear colleagues, the forum is now open to be able to engage with the Secretary-General on the questions but I would like to request that we be concise and precise in our questions so that we're able to allow as many questions as possible. So, we'll start with the three questions and then we'll see how we pick it up from there.
May I interrupt, Ba? More than asking questions, to me, I'd like to hear your opinions and your suggestions and your ideas to permit to be able to improve also what I'm doing, okay? But of course, if you ask questions, I'll try to answer, but don't feel shy. Give your opinions, give your suggestions, give your contributions because I also am here to learn with you.
Thank you. We'll start with Carlos.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary-General. My name is Carlos Haddad. I am the Director of Administration here at ECA. First, I would like to thank you for doing something that was never done before, which is the delegation of authorities that you have spearheaded and made it finally happen. As you requested feedback, as you know, with the delegation of authorities comes a lot of responsibility and there is a lot of work that was being done by our colleagues in headquarters that now we are expected to do. However, none of these positions or this manpower or human power was also given to us to conduct this work. I would appreciate if you can look into this because we keep losing positions while we continue to receive now more delegation. Thank you.
Thank you. Another question? Take a second one? Yes, Josephine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Secretary-General. My question is about the new budget reforms. You talked about the need for the UN to be relevant. The recently introduced budget plan for 2020 and the reform requires us now, first, we have moved from a year-long program of work to a year, which I think we are moving from being strategic to operational and then, we are now required to demonstrate just one significant result per sub-program. And for me, it's becoming a challenge, and not just for me, we have seen it's a challenge to really demonstrate that we are relevant. We are glad that this is... the budget reform is in trial. We are told for three years. So, my question is, what is the mechanism to monitor and to include our feedback on the budget reform so that it informs the revision if need be of the budget reform? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Third intervention. I hope this time it will be a suggestion or a comment to the statement.
What do you mean by budget reform? Because there are many reforms related to the budget.
Thank you, sir. This is about the... for the secretariat, they've introduced a new planning and budgeting where we will no longer be...
To move from two years to one year?
One year, the one year now.
I mean, it changes the way the reporting is done, it changes all these things. I believe in the end, it is a simplification and I mean, the colleagues now to organize yourselves to respond... to be able to organize yourselves to respond to this new way to present things. It is a much more effective way, because we link the evaluation of the past to the preparation of the future instead of the separate, and we have many lower, lower number of reports. But you need a more sophistication in the way we link things, and of course, if that requires some training or some whatever, please let us know through our headquarters system, they will be happy, I hope, to support you on this transformation. But I think it is a very important one. Now, delegation of authority. Delegation of authority is something everybody was claiming. The moment delegation of authority comes, "Ah!" Now, dear colleagues, move ahead with it, move ahead with it, and I mean, don't complicate it too much. No, the delegation of authority is not so complicated, and it must be also followed by the simplification of procedures. Obviously, you might need to do some readjustments in relation to staffing, but I would say in a, in an organization with the dimension of ECHA, I think that if you have by sure areas where you can do some, because now you also have this possibility with delegation of authority, readjustments in the way you are organized internally, to strengthen the areas where more work happens, and to take profit of areas where less work is necessary. But I mean, let's not transform what everybody was asking for into a new problem, because in the UN, we have this fantastic art. We always transform opportunities into problems, but we are here to do the opposite, to transform problems into opportunities.
Thank you. Can we have another round of questions? We take another three? Yes, please, the lady at the back.
Thank you, Secretary General. My name is Reka, I am with the Resident Coordinators' Office as policy adviser. First of all, thank you very much for your personal priority, that is what you have said all the time, the professional, institutional, and personal priority to have gender parity in the UN. But what we have also seen, even, I was looking at some of the data from 2015, but then it is still, the case is same in terms of having gender parity in the UN, especially at the level of P4, P5 level, where it gets stagnated. One of the report of the UN Women says, in UNDP, for example, the year that we will have gender parity in UNDP, it says never, because it just gets stagnated there. But then we have also good example of UNFPA, for example, it has parity almost across the agency. So it's not a question, but can we introduce some of the innovative approach, like, you know, having exchange program for the aspiring women leadership in the UN system to go to other agency and have a look, what are they doing, how innovatively they are doing, so that we really achieve the target by 2030, if not later?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty thirty or even before. Thank you very much.
Well, I mean, we have a interagency team dealing with that, and I hope that mechanisms of mutual learning can, can be put in place. We have two main difficulties today. One main difficulty is that, as you know, the retirement age was increased, so we are having exactly at this moment less renovation of staff, and it's an obstacle to change gender, because, I mean, the people that were supposed to retire are staying for a longer period, and most of the ones that are staying are men, because it's, and the second, if one looks at downsizing, in downsizing, gender is not taken into account, which means again that in downsizing, we are, so we are doing two things. When we are, we had a discussion with the staff unions, and we are presenting to the ACBQ and the Fifth Committee some changes in our staff rules, allowing gender to be more taken into account in some of these operations. And second, I will take your suggestion seriously, and I will talk to the leaders of the different organizations. We are following the performance organization by organizations, and where we will see that there is a gap, we'll try to convince them to talk to others and to learn with others. In the missions at where we're having more problems, we are now adopting a number of emergency measures, because that's where we are not making any progress, but I hope that we'll be able to do so. In, in the agencies, the situation is very different from agency to agency, but I must say, I'm quite optimistic, because several agencies are already there, so there is a reason to be, to be optimistic, and if the others follow the same methodologies, we'll get there. But we have these two obstacles. The obstacle of the pension, of the pension, of the retirement, and the obstacle of some staff rules, namely in downsizing, that are especially for, this is particularly true to missions, to peacekeeping missions and peace operations, where we are having difficulties in retaining women.
Do you, and do you have any more comments, suggestions, or question? If then, please one, yes, please.
Mr. Secretary General, it's always a pleasure to have you around here. My name is Francis Mumbwe Wafula, I'm the administrative officer for the UN Office of the African Union. I just wanted to touch on one topical issue. A number of staff feel affected, and this is on the roster. The roster, the intent was good, and that is to weaken the recruitment process. However, there are few roadblocks, one populating the roster. I don't think it's been done frequently, timely to ensure that staff members within and without the organization get a chance to be included in the roster. Secondly, too, while the roster is in place, there are quite a number of instances where you find that hiring officers still go back and start through written exercises, go through roster process before a selection process. So essentially, you find that the whole intent of having the roster is defeated. I just wanted to flag this for your attention, and I know the member states are touching on it, they have grip of the situation. Thank you.
Well, it's, you are absolutely true. We have not one roster, we have many rosters in the organization, and they do not work well. And we will be presenting, we presented to the Fifth Committee a document on strategy on human resources. Unfortunately, the Fifth Committee was not able to discuss it in December, and they postponed it to, I think, September or something of the sort. We are taking profit of it to go beyond the strategy and to come with, and we will discuss it with the staff in between, to come with a whole set of reform of our staff management rules. And one of the things that of course needs a huge change is the roster system that is indeed extremely ineffective and doesn't even protect the interests of the staff. You are absolutely right.
Thank you. And, yes, please.
Thank you, Secretary General, and thank you to my colleagues who have tabled many of these very difficult subjects to bring to discussion today. My concern that hasn't been mentioned so far has to do with competition amongst UN agencies. This is an area that I feel like deserves a little bit of attention in terms of how, my question to you would be, how can we encourage healthy competition amongst UN agencies, and especially in terms of how we look at budgeting and available resources? Thank you.
Well, there is a cultural dimension in it, and that is one of the reasons of the reform, of the empowerment of the resident coordinator system, et cetera, but there are two things that in the compact we are trying to discuss with member states that would diminish that competition. One is to have less earmarked funding and more core funding to agencies, because if agencies have more core funding, that diminishes the need of competition for specific things. And second, to increase the funding that is managed through the system globally at each country level, because it allows to align the funding with the priorities of the government and the priorities of the country team, and diminishes the level of competition among agencies. But let's be clear, this is not something we can solve with a miracle. There will always be a certain level of a competition, and there is a certain level of competition that is not entirely negative, if it forces people to try to do better. But the kind of competition we have, it is excessive, and it's sometimes undermining the capacity to work together, and that is what doesn't make sense at all.
Thank you. We'll take a last question from the colleague in front here.
Mine is, hello, can you hear me? Mine is a, mine is a comment. My name is Vincent Quessi-Parker, I work for UNHCR. I had the privilege of working with the Secretary General in Geneva for-
When we were both young.
Yes. When he was at the helm of UNHCR. And I just want to attest to the fact that I am personally a beneficiary of the reform that he undertook at UNHCR. I believe that UNHCR's commitment to the UN is non-negotiable, and our commitment to the search for solutions in the world is equally non-negotiable. And because we've had this remarkable experience of witnessing the outcome of the reform, that's why we decided to give the Secretary General to the, to give the High Commissioner of UNHCR to the, to the UN as our Secretary General. Thank you.
It was easier in UNHCR, because the advantage of the High Commissioner is that he can take decisions by himself, yet I need to go to the Fifth Committee and to the General Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary General, for really engaging with us and for the very comprehensive responses that you provided to staff. We now turn to the next segment of our program, which is basically recognition of staff that, and also awarding certificates to staff who have retired or who will be retiring between first November 2018 and 31st December 2019. According to information that we've received from all UN entities, we have a total of five staff members who have retired and will be retiring during a specified period. Two of the staff members are not with us to be able to receive their awards, but three of them are with us and present in the room. I therefore will be calling their names, and I request that they come forward and receive their certificates from the Secretary General. I would like to kindly request the Secretary General to step down so that he can award the certificates. The colleagues that have certificates, please, you could just come towards the SG so that you can be able to hand over the certificates as I call their names. I will start with the staff from UNICEF, Ms. Gillian Melsope, the UN NSF representative who retired on the 30th April 2019. I'm calling upon Ms. Stendo Wadremiriam from UNICEF, the Administrator Assistance, who retired on the 31st March 2019. Associate who retired on the 1st of November 2018. May I ask the, the awards, Mr. Secretary General, if you could take a photo with them? I'm sure they'll be privileged and honored to have a photo with you. If the three of them, please, could come in the front, take a photo with SG. All the three, all the three, if you would please to be together. Thank you very much. The, of its, our meeting of the SG with the principals has now come to an end, I would like to close the ceremony.